All right, good morning and welcome to the December seventeenth meeting of the Delaware County Council. If we call this meeting to order, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Holt, would you like to kick it off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, roll call please.
Mr. Webb, here. Flanagan, present.
Mr. Smoak, present.
Mr. Hughes, present.
Mr. Whitehead, present. Scants, present. Piper.
Here.
That's Freeman, here.
All right, we need to start off today with our public hearing. This is establishing an ERA for Midwest Metal with their tax abatement. Do we have anyone here who'd wish to speak? Go ahead and hit the podium.
Hello, good morning. Chad Smith, CFO at Midwest Metal Products. I'll just give a quick overview of the tax abatement if you'd like.
Sure.
So we're looking at two ideal mesh welders. We actually were here, I was here four or five years ago when we purchased our first one. It was a successful purchase for us. Within a year, I was here again to buy another one. That customer and others have grown well for us and we decided to purchase one more back in around June this year. Unfortunately, the lead time was twelve months, so by the time it arrived, it would have been too late. We were able to find another one that has been delivered and is operational, so that's why we bought two in the same year. But this positions us well to continue to grow with the current customer as well as other customers. The other item on the abatement is an LVD press brake. That's just replacing an existing press brake. A lot of our equipment's twenty years old or older and just needs replaced as it ages.
Anyone else who'd like to speak?
I'd point out that the public hearing was noticed properly in the Star Press on December sixth. And per our new rules, Midwest Metal sent copies of the notice to all of the adjoining landowners to their two facilities. And I have copies of those and will provide that to the owner's office.
All right, last chance to have a public hearing on the Midwest Metal establishing of an ERA for their tax abatement. Hearing none? All right, thank you. We'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
We have your resolutions later in the agenda. All right, on to our regular meeting. Just a reminder, questions from the public may be directed to county council D I S T at C O dot Delaware dot I N dot U S. Again, that's county council D I S T at C O dot Delaware dot I N dot U S. Marissa, was the agenda posted?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll now entertain an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Eugene. Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Smoak.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Scants.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, I'll now entertain the approval of the November twenty-sixth county council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Ryan. Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't here.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Smoak.
Abstain.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Scants.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. Moving on to the transfer and appropriation agenda. Do you want to share that any of the addendums did not come before the finance committee? Starting off in county general, one fifty-five EMS. Two twenty-one, operating supplies, fuel, positive fifteen thousand. Three sixty-three, three sixty-one repairs and maintenance, equipment machinery, negative six thousand five hundred. Three sixty-four, three sixty-three repairs and maintenance vehicle, negative six thousand five hundred. Three ninety-three conferences and training, negative two thousand, total of zero.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. This is just to cover a gas bill and hopefully get you through the rest of the year.
Yeah, it will.
Yep.
Do we have any further questions? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Scants.
Yes.
Mr. Smoak.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, thank you. All right. One thirty-nine, public defender. One seventy-three, one-on-one, legal assistant, negative one thousand eighty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. One fifty-two, one-on-one, attorney salary, positive eight cents. One seventy-five, one-on-one, attorney salary, positive eight cents. One fifty-six, one-on-one, investigator, negative two thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. One forty-one, one-on-one, chief public defender, positive three thousand five hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. All right, Shelley, you've got a lot going on here, so I'll let you explain this one.
Okay. We had two attorneys who received double pay for some reason. One was caught and he paid it back. The other one wasn't, so he is not getting the last paycheck of the year. But both of their accounts still showed and our auditor explained that when you zero out an account, it automatically goes to eight cents. So we had to fund the eight cents for each attorney so that we could have that balance book for them. The funds coming out of lines are going into our chief, Sam Beasley's line, not because he's getting any extra money or anything. At the beginning of the year, Kelly Bryan was owed some money. I had his salary cut off December thirty-first, so he was still owed a little money in January. Then the next pay comes, the next pay period comes along and I'm putting sixty-five hours in each time slot and put it in Kelly Bryan's. He was still on our payroll. She hadn't been removed yet. So this is to make up the difference between Kelly Bryan's pay and Sam Beasley's pay. So Sam could get paid the last pay of the year.
Do we have any additional questions? Why don't you share with the team how much we're getting back?
Well, we, I'm getting claims for, I this week got claims for twelve thousand dollars. But we're hoping of the attorney fee money that we asked for and you granted that we're going to be able to give back now at least thirty to forty thousand dollars of that, so we're happy with that.
We like that too. Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Scants.
Yes.
Mr. Smoak.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Same to you. One forty-five jail. One ninety-eight, one-on-one, part-time, negative two thousand three hundred fifty dollars and eighty-seven cents. One fifty-four, one-on-one, correctional officer, positive two thousand three hundred fifty dollars and eighty-seven cents. One ninety-seven, one twenty-six, overtime, negative sixty-one dollars. One fifty-two, one-on-one, correctional officer, positive sixty-one dollars. Two twenty-three, operating supplies, food lodging, positive ten thousand and forty-four dollars. Three sixty-one, repairs and maintenance, equipment machinery, negative five thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Five thirty-six, equipment, negative four thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. You've got a little scenario with the food portion, right? You want to explain that to them?
Right, we, we're just trying to get through the remainder of the year, paying out the bills that she has to feed the inmates. That's what that money's for.
Anything else?
You want to talk about the, um, no?
The correctional officer?
No, sorry, the food, never mind. The repairs and maintenance, what's that going to take away from them?
You mean what I transferred out?
Yeah.
Nothing. We didn't have anything left pending to pay out of it, but we were short for food, so we just moved what we had left over there so we could pay the bills and not carry them into the next year.
So it wasn't anything specific that you had planned on using it for?
No. We just never know when a washer's going to go down or a dryer, so it's part of the budget and we didn't end up needing it. Thank heavens.
And then you wrote back, you had mentioned there's going to be a give back also?
Yes. Right now, well, on the jail side, there's small amounts, not much. On the sheriff's side, we should have right at sixty-two thousand to give back in fuel money when we appropriated or did the budget for this year. Obviously, fuel was about four dollars a gallon and thank heavens that the prices went down, so we haven't needed as much.
Thank you.
All right, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Scants.
Yes.
Mr. Smoak.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, thank you. One thirty-eight courts. One oh-six, one-on-one, assistant court reporter, negative three thousand dollars. Three ninety, other services and charges, positive three thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Emily, would you like to share what this one's about?
Sure. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. We had a jury trial and some psych fees and interpreter fees that we wanted to finish out paying out the rest of the year. And so this, along with some balances we had in the budget, covered that. We had two psych bills come in at the very last that we couldn't cover, so we're just going to cover those next year. We still have about fifteen thousand two hundred dollars that's going to come back out of our salary lines. And then we have probably another two or three thousand in our two-hundred series that'll be coming back to you guys. It just shows that we're budgeting pretty close to what we need. But that's all it's for, is to cover up some end-of-year bills. But it did carry us through what we had budgeted for the jury trials. It did carry us through end-of-year.
Good. Do you have any additional questions for Emily? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Smoak.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Scants.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. All right. One twenty-six, auditor. One oh-eight, one-on-one, finance deputy, negative three thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars. One oh-two, one-on-one, chief deputy, positive one thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars. One nineteen, one-on-one, tax sale deputy, positive one thousand three hundred nineteen dollars. D one oh-two, positive one dollar. One twenty-six, overtime, positive eight thousand one hundred dollars. Eight, one-on-one, part-time, negative nine thousand six hundred thirty dollars. One seventy-one, FICA, positive six hundred twenty dollars. One seventy-two, perf, positive nine hundred ten dollars, total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve.
And I will say.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. All right, we've got a lot going on here. Tanya, would you like to?
Yeah, I can, I can point out some of the basics. Tanya Dunsmore, Delaware County Chief Deputy Auditor. We would like to reduce the amount on one twenty-six to a positive six thousand three hundred fifty-seven.
What was that number one more time?
Six thousand three hundred fifty-seven. One ninety-eight, reduce that to negative seven thousand five hundred and fifty-six. And the FICA and perf is not, that should not be on ours. Because it's not held in our budget.
Eliminate those then?
Eliminate those.
Okay.
So technically, when you do that, that reduces one ninety-eight to negative six thousand three hundred fifty-seven.
So the part-time, the overtime are the same number?
Correct.
Let's start with the salary shortages, Tanya.
That is just more of the moving around. The other departments have dealt with just the same at the end of the year. Trying to get things in order, I guess you would say. I thought I had this done in July, but we did go through conversion and then we have had some issues with people's lines as far as, you know, maybe the wrong line was put in on payroll and approved and therefore it got paid out of the wrong line. So it's a matter of moving it around because of that. So it's just straightening it up. It's not that anybody's getting more pay.
But these two lines were short. One oh-two and one nineteen.
Correct, and there's more. There's more in one oh-eight, one-on-one.
Okay, so one oh-eight, it was paid over? That's a negative number.
That's correct. It had more and the other two had less.
Okay. So how does that work out for that person?
There's still enough there to pay that person through the last pay.
So they've not been overpaid and now they're going to go without a month to pay or anything to offset it?
Not at all.
This is just what's in the budget.
It's just a matter of things mixed up.
So to help me understand, for the one oh-two, one-on-one and the one nineteen, one-on-one, you're not saying that the pay, like you wouldn't have noticed it throughout the year because your pay was the same. You've just gotten down to the final month and there's not enough in there to make those final payrolls. Is that what you're telling me?
That's exactly right, right.
The one of the things we do at the end of every year is reconcile every single employee's account. And we'll go down to the penny and see if there's shortage, you know, because it's a rounding. So we may be a penny off high or low and we balance every single front line. So it's a very time-consuming, laborious process, but that's what these, some of these departments coming out and we're doing here, essentially making everything zero out to the end of the year.
Sure, I get that. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, these employees were getting like nineteen hundred dollars in additional pay.
No, no, no.
It's just square that lineup.
Correct.
The pay that they're going to bring home at the end of the week is the same as it was last week.
Same, correct.
Okay.
Same as the budget was approved.
Thank you for explaining that.
Tanya, can you go over, my, my numbers aren't matching up. What did you reduce overtime and part-time to again?
Six thousand three hundred and fifty-seven.
Okay.
Negative six thousand three hundred fifty-seven. And then negative six three five seven, right?
That's correct.
Right.
Oh, negative.
Negative and a positive.
The one dollar for D one oh-two, can you just give me the name of that line? Please.
Chief deputy line, the old one.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just to, not, it's, it's actually change, but I don't deal in change because everything we do with the gateway is per the dollar. So it was just sitting there after like all the conversion and everything. It just needed change, basically. And so I just put a dollar.
I'm glad you said that because earlier in a couple of transfers we did, there was a lot of change and I was thinking the same thing. I didn't think you did that.
Yeah, we had to round, so, yeah.
Those must have just snuck in there on those particular ones. I didn't think we did. I thought you rounded up to the dollar. Well, so I have another question. I'm curious about, I understand about the getting the salaries in line. Walk me through the overtime. We're in the last month of the year, just two weeks left. What could possibly need six thousand dollars in overtime?
I'll let Ed take it from here.
Okay. So this is starting in July first where the job classification changed per the federal Department of Labor when they changed the amount. And at that time, the exempt, was it the exempt employees qualified for overtime if they were compensated to the new requirements, which were, I believe, fifty-eight, eight, in round numbers?
It was forty-some in July first, fifty-eight, eight, as of January.
And at that time, our chief deputy did not qualify because she wasn't making that amount of money, so she qualified for overtime. So that's what this is for, part of this is for, is to pay her for that overtime.
So you're talking about compensated for next year's salary increases?
No, not this year.
They changed this year.
This is not all just me either.
Right, there's, there's multiple departments where this applied to. I'm trying to.
Well, it's not just, I'm not the only employee included in this amount of money, is what I'm trying to say.
How many employees are in it?
Two.
There's two in our department.
Which is this line.
And then we have.
I missed for your department.
We have another department coming up who's standing behind me on the addendum for the same.
Okay. Matt, can you speak to this?
Yeah, so to be clear, the adjustment that was of July first for the FLSA adjustment was forty-three, six something and change.
Correct.
Tanya is a forty thousand dollar employee currently. However, that FLSA change was negated and put back to the twenty-nineteen numbers as of November, middle of November. And what was supposed to happen on January first was supposed to jump up to the fifty-eight, right, thousand and what have you.
I will say that my time is only from, on here, included in this money, is only from July first to November fourteenth, the day before the judge made the new ruling. And it's straight pay. There's no time and a half.
So ultimately, we have not addressed any other gaps. And I don't know legally what we are responsible to pay out if an exempt employee who previously would not have been eligible for overtime is basing their overtime on the FLSA status, which no longer exists, the threshold.
Yeah, so this is a conundrum in a gray area that Delaware County would not be the, presumably would not be the only employer that is a little bit caught off guard by this. So you're right, there was a rule that went into effect on, in July of this year, that mandated salaries, that mandated the minimum salary for salaried employees to be considered exempt increase to, you had just said.
Forty-three, eight, eighty-eight.
Thank you. That was in effect as of July of this year and then it was going to increase again in January of twenty-twenty-five to fifty-some-odd thousand. Yes. In November, there is ongoing litigation out of the state of Texas federal court that struck down that rule. So this was a rule change. It was not a, not an act of Congress. It was a rule change of the administrative agency, Department of Labor. The court found that that rule was incorrect. I haven't read the whole sixty-five page opinion, but in summary, it was struck down, including the rule change that went into effect in November. So there is no increase taking place in January. And retroactively, the increase from July of this year was struck down. What does that mean for governments, agencies, regular employers who were complying in the meantime? I have no idea.
I believe that you read them, there was a section.
You were complying with the law, with the rule that was in place as of the time. That law, that rule has been retroactively nullified. So it's not real clear on what the different, on how you deal with that other than you do not have to continue to pay overtime based on that threshold as of the fifteenth moving forward.
So it's currently, as it sits, if nothing else happens, everything that calls us for this has been struck down?
It's been, yes, it's been vacated and it went back down to the thirty-six-odd thousand dollars.
Thirty-five, five, sixty-eight, thank you.
Is what's back in effect now. So there was a five-month, four-month period where it was increased, now it's not. So you do with that is entirely up to you. But there was a period where governments, any employer would have had to comply with that in order for their employees to be considered exempt and then retroactively that was nullified.
Ed, are you going to say that?
Basically, what I, one of the sections I read, it says this, because of this rule change after the fact, which, I guess, I don't know if it's real comment, but because it's after the fact, they're leaving these discrepancies, issues, back up to local decisions and to local council.
Yeah, I think it's.
There's no, no right or wrong way, I guess.
Well, if we have individuals who worked under the presumption that they were going to receive overtime under the new legislation, I think it's pretty cruddy of us to pull that away after they've already worked the hours. We never, as a council, made any kind of decision to change that, to increase their salary, to make them. Yeah, but they already worked the hours.
But then, why didn't we pay them then then?
I don't have an answer to that, but.
So like if somebody was saying they worked the overtime and we paid it and now it's changed, I'd say, okay, but we paid it, but we haven't paid it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Actually, in our case, we, we were going to request it earlier. We were waiting until the council decided to do something on the job classification. And because it took so long, unfortunately, it was after the fact, kind of like this all was changed after the fact. And because we waited, tried to make it easy for the council and our office to make the transition, the request easy, we got stuck in this threadbag.
And also, I will add to that, as far as transparency goes, with our new conversion and creating new lines, there, there used to be a line, or as of this year, the line sits part-time slash overtime. And in the conversion, we've tried to make things more transparent as far as making a line for each and everything. So with that, we created an overtime line, but in the conversion, instead of separating the money out into two different lines, it's just sitting in the one still. So we were just trying to be, again, transparent as far as coming up here and requesting that we transfer money from the one line into the other line that was created. But they were, all the money was together in one that reads part-time, overtime.
So technically, the budget you passed for this year said overtime slash regular time.
Part-time.
Part-time, you know, part-time and overtime. It's how it read when you passed it last year. It's just during the conversion, it moved all the money into just a part-time line.
Does that mean theoretically, if nothing had changed, you could have paid it out without us?
That's correct. And still, probably technically can. It's just the conversion changed that moved that money into the one line, had to map it to one line or the other.
What is the breakdown of the numbers for you and for the bookkeeper?
Two thousand two seventeen fifteen.
Or?
Nope, hold on, hold on, hold on, because that, hang on, shoot. Because I reduced, so hang on just a minute, sorry about that. It's right here. Oh, I don't need it. Okay, one thousand eight sixty-five fifty.
One thousand six hundred.
Now, one thousand eight sixty-five fifty. Four thousand four ninety-one thirty-eight.
Eighteen sixty-five is for.
Head bookkeeper. I'm adding to make sure those equal the total I gave you, yes. Equals six thousand three fifty-six eighty-eight and you can see that I rounded my transfer to six thousand three hundred fifty-seven. And there's still money going back to county general at the end of the year of this line.
So I see the dollar amount. Can you write that down into hours' work, please?
My head bookkeeper is maxed out at eighty-seven and a half. And one eighty-nine point seven five.
And that's for how many months again?
A head bookkeeper would be all year, up until Wednesday, last Wednesday. And I believe, if I'm thinking my days right. And like I said, mine was only from July first, which technically July fifth, if you want to be exact, through November thirteenth. And, but I cut it off July first to November fourteenth because of the ruling on July, or November fifteenth.
And to be fair, the bookkeeper, that is, that is overtime not based on this.
It's, it's comp, straight, okay.
Just, are you, is Brad and Kathy up there for a reason?
Well, they're here for the same reason, um, they're on the addendum. And treasurer's chief deputy falls under the same ruling. And she works a lot of, um, comp during tax time and tax sale.
Um. I mean, my, my opinion on this has nothing to do with whether or not Tanya's put in the work, cause I know she has, but more so, we've got two, do we have others? If so, are those monies available in the existing budget versus having to need to come for money in January? I don't know the answer to that. So that's my only concern.
What would happen, um, if the, um, deputy. Eh, you have almost a hundred and ninety hours, what would happen if decided, well, um, I'm not, I'm not gonna get paid. So I'm not gonna work those, uh, then what happens?
The work won't get done. I mean, if I'm not here.
I disagree with that.
I would, I would.
The work always gets done.
Well, I would disagree with you, but what I'm saying is, I don't take the time because there isn't time to let go. It's like, I have taken some time and what time I took was comp time. I have used none, none of my PTO hours. Any time off I've taken this year, I took comp. And especially after the July first date, because I was trying to be fair and use the comp rather than you guys having to pay me the comp. And, um, so that, so that's how I did it, I felt like that was a fair way to do it. I do put in a lot of time, I have put in way more than anyone probably should. But if I feel like there's things that need done, I do them. And there's a lot. And it's new, you know, and I know Ryan's sick of hearing the word new, but it's been new all year to a lot of us. So therefore, I have put in the time in order to try to do things good and right.
How much overtime did we pay last year, do you have any idea?
I mean, countywide?
Well, no, just out of your department.
I don't think part of paying anything. Or, uh, uh.
Part-time overtime is a combined line.
Combined it. We're not paid overtime.
I have no idea what we would have.
If you did pay it, it's not separated out, right?
What about next year, eh, eh, will these two employees be eligible for overtime next year?
No. You guys voted to make all chief deputies excluded as of November twenty-sixth.
What was your specific, quite which two, the two chief deputies or the chief deputy and the head bookkeeper?
The, the, just the two employees related to this one, right here, yeah.
Chief deputy will not.
Cause we're gonna be in the same situation next year, doing work, staying over late, make sure the work gets done and not getting overtime.
Just like Tanya said, the chief deputies in our new classification, they're excluded.
Well, they're currently exempt, so they're still not eligible for overtime in the traditional sense.
But during that time period that they worked it, they were.
But here, here's my thing though, if, if, if there's a rule in place and then a court comes back and retroactively says, no, we got it wrong on that. That's, that's, that's wrong, we're not gonna do that. And nothing has been done up to that point yet, how do we still then go back and, and override it, do it anyway? I get it if we had already paid it out.
The work was done, I mean, now Ryan, now if you had the opportunity to all of a sudden.
I would have put in for my money way the hell before December.
Well, I'm just saying, you would, you would take that opportunity and you would work, cause you're, that's what you do, you, you like to pick up time, you like to do those things, you have the work to do. She had the work to do, Kathy had the work to do. You would pick it up, if this law changed, you'd be pretty upset if you didn't get paid out either.
I, I understand that, I, I would.
You did the work, you put the work in.
I'm not.
Under the assumption you should have been getting paid.
That's my whole point, why?
We have no control over the rules that changed.
I guess I'm frustrated in fact that why it's getting dumped in our lap instead of being paid out when it happened, should have been paid, this wouldn't even been an issue.
So the, the one thing that I, I didn't say, um, during the little discussion that I, that I had a couple of minutes ago describing this. The Department of Labor has appealed the ruling. Um, that has not, it means nothing as we sit here today, but it is possible the appellate court could vacate. The district court judge's ruling and throw us right back into the rules. They could vacate it, um, at the preliminary stage early on, if they felt like they should, they could wait until they've actually heard the entire case. And then find in favor of the Department of Labor, I mean, so it's, it's possible that it could go back the other way. All I'm telling you is that as of today, that rule was struck down. The appeals are ongoing, which means it is entirely possible that we'll end up back in a situation where, um. And the rules are reinstated, I have no idea how the court would handle. All of this that's gone on, if they'll say, well, they, the rule's reinstated and they are retroactively entitled to that time or not, I don't know, but it is just something to keep in mind. That just because as of today, that rule's been struck down, the appeal is ongoing, it could be reinstated in the future.
Thank you. I think Ryan makes a valid point in that they should have, but I also appreciate Ed them waiting till we got our ducks in the rook before they applied for. But they found the money within their budget.
Thank you, Dan.
Well, so, I mean, I'm not, I'm just putting that out there.
If I could real quick, speaking about it being in their budget, someone can correct me if I'm wrong on this. I'm almost, I could be wrong on this, but I'm pretty sure that, I remember a couple of months ago. There was a conversation up here about needing some money for part-time, I think it was part-time. And I asked the question, why, why wouldn't we just hire people? And I think Ed said, nobody wants to work full-time for the money, so we have to pay them part-time or, or, uh, something along those lines. And then we transferred in money, so to see all of a sudden that there's ten thousand dollars in part-time. Am, am I hearing, am I remembering that right, did we transfer money into part-time just a couple of months ago?
We had, that, at that time, the line was probably part-time overtime, right, you're just now switched, like breaking it out.
Yeah, and you're remembering way earlier in the year, to be honest with you. And then since then, uh, I was here in July and we had, um, if you remember, I'm sure you do. Lots of employees who had not been hi- rehired yet, like we were working part-time people, okay? We were doing a lot of part-time rather than hiring full-time, then our part-time became full-time, that sort of thing, okay? So it took a while to fill those positions, so as those positions, those full-time positions sat as far as not used. Then later, and this is what you're remembering as far as a few months ago. We moved money from, like, I adjusted all the salary line stuff, it was like mid-year. Adjusted all the salary lines according to who had not been hired and was hired, et cetera, in order to, um. And then took the rest, I should say, like leftover, you know what I mean? And put it into that line.
You're saying that, that, that did happen, but it wasn't an appropriation, that it was a transfer in the part-time, is that what you're saying?
When I transferred all that money, yes, it was like from other lines that hadn't been used and I transferred money into, um, or the excess of it. Of what wasn't needed, spread out throughout the salary lines, was then put into this line, like the excess.
I just remembered the conversation, cause I said, why don't, why don't we hire them, and he said, don't wanna work for the money, so. I was just making a point, you said they found the budget, I wanted to make sure that wasn't money we just gave to them.
I believe you're talking earlier in the year, like before I was chief deputy.
So in fact, you've always been chief deputy.
I know you did.
So just to be clear, in all fairness, um, we've got three, six, seven, uh, chief deputy positions under the forty-three thousand. Um. Threshold that, forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight threshold that was established and reneged, um, this year. So, well, we have two here today. Um. I don't know who else earns overtime, there's chief deputy coroner, there's assessor, there's chief deputy inspector. Um. Recorder's office and the chief deputy clerk and clerk's office, so. Today is this, and I don't know if there's gonna be more, but we are in essence, you know. Approving that, and if we approve that, then, you know, there's gonna be more of this conversation, I'm guessing. So if, if, if anybody's earned overtime in that capacity, so I'm not sure anybody was tracking it, but it is, it is there and we do have seven that fall under that same criteria.
If the hours were worked under that assumption of being paid, I, I just don't see how we can't, but that's my opinion.
And the finance committee meeting, what did the discussion and the recommend, recommendation come out of that?
There wasn't one, uh, I was a little confused by what was happening, didn't have anything in front of me relative to the FLSA stuff or any of the other. So we just said, okay.
Just listened and.
Yeah, we did, we just, we said, okay, and left it, and then the adjustments have been made and what have you, so. Um, that was the precipice of my email that stipulated what the FLSA ruling was, what the thresholds were, et cetera.
It was one of those moments where, like, after the fact, you start to have some additional questions and whatnot, and Matt and I talked again, I guess that afternoon, about it. Um, just because it is so com- complicated.
I would have to agree with President Piper on, if you were working under the presumption that you were going to get paid. And now, as council were deciding, as Ryan says, not to pay it. I hard, find that hard to believe, I mean, you want your employees to work under good faith, that if they're doing the work, that they're gonna get compensated for it. I would be in favor of approving this.
And there's nothing as far as, um, in the exempt, non-exempt, that, that she definitely qualified for it.
At that time. But next year, they're all excluded, so they will not.
Okay, that was my original confusion on it, was do they qualify, should this happen in the first, but, but what you're, what I'm hearing is you're saying, this was planned all along, it was always supposed to happen. And the court case changed it.
Till November.
So I believe we have to do a roll call on the amendment of the numbers, right?
Do we need a motion?
Uh.
Yeah.
Motion for the, accept the change of numbers, is that correct?
If I may.
Yeah.
Kathy Butterfield, Delaware County Treasurer's Office, Chief Deputy. I had a conversation with Matt not long after this whole salary study came about. And I have comp time, I only have sixty-three hours of comp time, but mine has been restructuring from two years of a huge turnaround in our office. We lost our head cashier, she passed away, and I have all brand-new cashiers. I have retrained, we have redone, we've reworked, we've redone that office, my comp time, their comp time next year will be low. So when I realized how much I had, the way this salary study was gonna go, and that they were gonna vote whether or not to make us exempt or excluded or whatever. I text Matt, I said, you have time for a conversation, he called me, we had a conversation about this and he told me to wait. And that there would be a conversation on it, so that's why we didn't bring it forward yet. And then when she was finished in the finance meeting, she told me she was surprised I wasn't there for this. I said I wasn't aware of it because Matt said we would have this conversation.
So prior to that ruling, that was, yeah. So what you're asking for is not on here.
Ours is, uh.
Okay, okay. I got you.
Okay, so I have a motion by Dan for the reductions, did I have a second, was that Eugene? Eugene. All right, roll call on the reduced amounts.
Ms. Blenkin.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cants.
Yes.
Ms. Smokel.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, roll call on the auditor's request.
Ms. Blenkin.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cants.
Yes.
Ms. Smokel.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. Moving out of county general, eleven twenty-two, project income. One thirty-eight, one oh one, peer recovery coach, negative three hundred and twenty-six dollars. One seventeen, one oh one, CAD supervisor, positive three hundred and twenty-six dollars. One seventy-three, health insurance, negative twelve thousand dollars. One seventy-two, perf, positive two thousand dollars. One seventy-one, FICA, positive ten thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, do we have any questions on this one?
I do.
Okay.
How are we off ten thousand dollars on FICA?
We are not, um, we have monies left in our grant, but because we do not have an exact figure of what is getting pulled, we just moved some money to be on the safe side. We have approximately six thousand and some dollars left in our grant, and then we moved, um, our health insurance is paid solely out of project income throughout the year. So we always budget that line high in case we need to move into other benefits.
All right, thank you.
Uh huh. All right, any additional questions, hearing none, roll call please.
Ms. Blenkin.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cants.
Yes.
Ms. Smokel.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes, Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven sixty-one, local public health services, one twenty-six, one oh one, environmental administrator, negative eleven thousand dollars. One seventy-two, perf, positive six thousand dollars, one seventy-three. Health insurance, positive five thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, Jamie, you wanna explain this one for us?
Yes, um, excuse me, that line one twenty-six is a position that was vacant for part of the year, so we had money sitting there. Uh, we had a shortfall in perf and insurance that we're just making up.
Do you have any additional questions for Jamie?
Was there any insight into the, the shortfalls? And this really actually goes back to, to the Casa folks too, um. Was there calculation issues, did you find anything?
I have not found anything, my bookkeeper was working with the auditor's office, I think, to try to determine where that issue came about, um. I just don't know, that's the same standard calculations we used every year, so I don't know if rates increased and we weren't made aware.
Okay.
Or if we were made aware and I missed that, I'm not sure. I think it's, I don't think we're the only department that fell short in FICA insurance, or perf, FICA, excuse me.
All right. Anything else, roll call please.
Ms. Blenkin.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cants.
Yes.
Ms. Smokel.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Oh, you're so low.
Yeah. One more.
Eleven fifty-nine, board of health, one ninety-eight, one oh one, part-time, negative three thousand dollars. One twenty-six, one oh one, overtime, positive three thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, and this is to pay out an employee, I believe?
Yes, counsel, this is a, uh, employee that under the job classification change is going from non-exempt to exempt next year. And we're seeking to pay out his balance of comp time, he's not carrying that over into next year.
Do you have any additional questions for Jamie? Hearing none, roll call please.
Ms. Blenkin.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cants.
Yes.
Ms. Smokel.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes, Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Yes, good, baby.
All right, on to the addendum. Akin County General, one fifty-five EMS. One eighteen, one oh one, advanced EMT, negative a hundred dollars. One ninety-six, one twenty-six, overtime, positive a hundred dollars. One twenty-one, one oh one, advanced EMT, positive three thousand, three hundred, sixty-five dollars and one cent. One twenty-nine, one oh one, paramedic, negative four thousand, two hundred, twenty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. One twenty-seven, one oh one, paramedic, positive one hundred, sixty-five dollars and twelve cents. One twenty-two, one oh one, advanced EMT, positive six hundred, ninety-two dollars and twenty-six cents, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, I'm gonna let you explain this one for us, Megan.
So we had, excuse me, we had a couple EMTs that were basics and then went up to advanced throughout the, at the beginning of the year, and towards the middle of the year. Um, so they were paid as advanced, so this is to put enough money back into their line to pay them out their final pay. Because the offset took more than what they were budgeted for because of the promotion, I guess you would say.
So you, are you guys not rounding up on yours to the dollar, or are we using change on this one?
Cause I did the exact amount. Cause I did the exact amount that they need.
So different departments do different.
No, it's just what I was, I, we were talking about it yesterday, and that's what I, those are numbers I was informed to do, and that's what I did. So we did the, the exact amount.
Tanya Dunsmore, Chief Deputy Auditor, it's okay for the financial system to do the sense. When we go to report to gateway, we still have to round.
So they do it, and then when you guys enter it, you round up or down?
Correct.
Okay, I follow you, thank you.
Alright, do we have any additional questions?
Oh, just roll fast, you guys fully staffed now?
No.
No?
No.
Openings.
One right now.
One, alright, alright, thank you.
What? Alright, roll call please.
Ms. Plankin.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Gantz.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Ms. Swab.
Yes.
Ms. Swyad.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes.
Can you send me the updated spreadsheet when afterwards?
Alright, moving on. One twenty-seven treasurer, one twenty-six, one oh one, chief deputy, positive one thousand, four hundred, twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. Three-ten professional services, negative one thousand, four hundred, twenty-three dollars and eighty cents, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, this is the same issue that we just discussed with the Chief Deputy in the auditor's office. Yeah, we have any additional questions, but do we?
I got a question real quick, why is this transferred to the Chief Deputy instead of overtime like the previous one?
We do not have an overtime line.
Okay, fair enough.
Well, for auditing purposes.
We can create one.
Is that a problem? Because technically, this is because of overtime.
Yeah, honestly, we should, um, make this into one-two-six, or, I'm sorry, her number's one-two-six. Elizabeth, what's my, my number, yeah, one-two-six, so instead of one-two-six, one oh one, it'll just be O-O-O, one-two-six. Make it an overtime line.
Okay.
If you guys approve, then what happens is the head bookkeeper creates that line within the financial system. And the money can transfer from wherever they're moving it from into that new line.
I'll make a motion to amend to overtime line.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan.
Alright, motion by Ryan, second by Eugene to update the line number to O-O-O dash one-two-six, is that correct?
Catch Eugene.
Uh, let's roll call on the updating of the line.
Ms. Plankin.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Gantz.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Swab.
Yes.
Swyad.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Alright.
Real quick, I just wanted to, um, let you guys know too, that we are of our three hundred and four thousand, we're giving back eleven thousand. And then, um, for, for, you know, at the end of the year, uh, including on that line, that's with that coming out of there, so.
Great, uh, roll call on the treasurer request.
Ms. Plankin.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Gantz.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Swab.
Yes.
Swyad.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. One twenty-four, communications, one oh nine, one oh one, comtech, negative seven thousand dollars. One seventy-two perf, positive seven thousand dollars, total transfer here.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, uh, Fred, you wanna go over this one for us?
I got an email from the auditor's office last Thursday that perf was seven thousand, around seven thousand dollars under where it's supposed to be.
Just across all people?
Yeah.
Right. Does that put you in any difficulties on making that up, or is it pretty easy to find?
No, I don't understand it, because I don't figure perf, so I was down an employee almost the whole year for maternity leave and. And some other employees, so I don't understand how we're that far under, uh, I, I, I don't understand it.
How often do you check your budget to see how it's trending?
I follow my budget quite religiously and, um, but i- if, my dilemma is, perf is figured on. The amount of full-time employees that you have and a percentage, so I don't understand being down an employee for a majority of the year, plus other vacancies. How we're that under, if it was, I, I just, I don't understand it.
Matt and I yesterday, uh, for the first time, actually saw someone log into the system and. Show us, like on the re- the reports, the ledger, it shows like what percentage of a line has been used for the year, so.
I print that, um, almost every other week.
And so you just didn't catch this trend?
Uh, it, it, it didn't show that it was coming close to negative, so I don't understand it.
So have we made any changes to the perf, or, or has there been any adjustments made on the numbers to, I mean. Have you guys seen why the, the thing is happening, or has happened?
That's a flat percentage, right, based on a salary?
The only thing I can figure is that when we did the twenty twenty-four budget, when they figured perf, they didn't figure on all the overtime, I, I, I don't know. It's just not a number that I ever would have thought would have been under, so.
Well, I mean, we're not off by like a hundred, like, yeah, I'm just looking, each one is like seven thousand, six thousand, one for nine hundred, but. I mean, they're pretty big numbers, um.
I feel like when we did our budget for twenty-four, like. I feel like we had that percentage in there and went through and calculated.
I can tell you, I can, I can tell you that being down an employee for almost the whole year and, and having other vacancies. For different portions of the year, then that should never be that, i- i- it, it's just not, it doesn't make sense.
Would depend upon how much your overtime was offset, wouldn't it?
Typically, you figure in the overtime dollars and the salary dollars, cause I asked that for budget time this year.
Yeah.
When they were, when, when, when the numbers were being figured, so. I can't wrap my head around it being that under, so. Try to watch it next year.
Yeah, well, I'd point out, if you requested for this year, it increased in perf of twenty-six thousand, council reduced it. By thirty-four thousand.
Right, and that's based on the numbers, so.
It's our fault.
No, that's, so when I requested that, that was based on bigger raises. They didn't get the size raises, so the auditor's office figured what the perf and FICA would be on the, the amended number.
And there's no new heads.
But we actually appropriated almost ten thousand dollars less than you had the year before.
I, I don't figure those numbers, but that's the problem, is I, it's not a number that I, I have anything to do with, so.
Well, I mean, you do when you submit your budget to do the math, but yeah, it's a percentage that's determined by someone else, you don't determine that percentage.
Since I've been here, in the, in all the years I've done budgeting, those numbers that I put in are a guess, they get adjusted at budget time by the auditor's office to meet what the salary is going to be. It's never a number that I put in other than a projection.
Cause there's, I mean, you, for next year, you would be able to, cause it's a flat percentage, that what is perf?
Eleven point two.
Perf is eleven point two, FICA is seven point six five, anyone who has FICA and perf in their budget. We would request that they do their own figuring on their FICA and perf for their budget, based on those percentages each year.
Okay.
Emily, you dying to say something?
Um, this is the problem I talked to you about earlier in the year, Jessica, where all the FICA and perf was not coming out of my accounts. I don't know what's, if his has just been incorrect. They aren't, they don't know what's happened, we've talked about it, they're looking into it, but maybe his has come out incorrectly. My side of it was that it was either come out too much on some page, and this is all I'm talking, anything outside of county general. I have probation, CASA, we had to go pay by pay and figure out what pay should have been for FICA and perf. And sometimes it's too much, sometimes it wasn't enough, so overall, we had to adjust at the end what it should have been. So I don't know if he has that, his, yours is outside county general, right? Is it in county general? So I don't know if that's the problem that everybody's gonna have, because FICA and perf, just on my outside county general budgets, were all a mess. Nothing was taken out correctly, and they've been made aware, I don't know what the problem is, we can't figure it out. So that may be why he's so short, but you have to go back pay by pay and figure it.
So when FICA and perf are taken out, are they taken out by employee, like, do you see it at that level, or is it just a lump sum? Lump sum?
Or is it the side of lump sum?
Okay.
I mean, on a positive note, I will tell you that I should turn in between one hundred and two hundred thousand dollars this year. I mean, there, there, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but.
Sure, well, I think, I think, I mean, we're just asking these questions, cause we're trying to figure out. How to stop it from happening again, right, like, we gotta ask. Right, or anyone, right, any department, we just wanna make sure we figure out the process, cause that's sometimes, we don't even understand. The steps in the process, right, so.
I don't ever remember a department giving back that much at the end of the year. I'm sure it's happened, but I just don't.
I average between one and two hundred thousand a year, so.
Pretty significant typically. Yeah. Alright, do you have any additional questions for?
Be honest, we don't want that, we want the budget to be closer to it, to normal.
Right.
I, I get it, but if I don't need to spend the money, man, I'm not gonna spend it.
Sure, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any additional, okay, roll call.
Ms. Plankin.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Gantz.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Ms. Swab.
Yes.
Swyad.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Alright, thank you. One fifty-three commissioners, one ninety-eight, one oh one, part-time, negative nine hundred, sixty-one dollars and forty-six cents. One twelve, one oh one, HR assistant, positive nine hundred, sixty-one dollars and forty-six cents, total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. You wanna?
Yeah, I think we should probably do the explanation, since Sarah's here on Pam's behalf, I don't know where Pam is. Um, this is for Lee in the HR's office. Um, apparently, Lee has been overpaid, um, on her, on her paycheck. Um, based on a bi-weekly calculation error since twenty twenty-three. Um, just now being caught, as I think the auditor's office has just now caught it. And as a result, they wanted to have her pay that back here in the last pay of the period of twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-four, excuse me. Um.
Right before Christmas?
Right before Christmas.
Cause of our mistake? I'm not voting for that.
Most cases, I don't think anybody would penalize somebody for that being the case, um, we went over this with Pam, this was part of what Jessica was mentioning previously. Um, she apparently was not aware that she was being, that her, being overpaid. Um, her salary is correct in the payroll system, the bi-weekly amount was incorrect. Uh, it was calculated that way when she started, which was in like January of twenty twenty-three, and never caught.
It wasn't an issue last year because she didn't, there was a little bit of extra money, so that's why it wasn't.
This says it's coming from part-time to the HR assistant.
Yeah, so that she can get paid a full s- a paycheck at the end of the year.
Otherwise, right now, she gets nothing, cause her line's paid out.
I got you, so, so this is the vote to give her the money, not to make her pay it back.
Not to make her pay it back, yet. I do think in January, we need to address the overpayment and, uh, process for her to potentially pay that back.
I think we need to discuss that as well, and we, we have, do we not have two separate issues, um, on our plate right now?
We do, but I'm not, we're not clear what the complete dollar amount is, I don't think.
For the two years?
Yeah.
Mm-mm, I don't have that.
The auditor's office has that? We do or don't?
I'm with Ryan, I'm not gonna say no to this, you're right, we have two issues, in my opinion. One is getting this fixed, which I assume we're getting done, the other is paying her out. What's happened last year in twenty-three, that's water under the bridge, in my opinion, there's nothing we can do about that. And get it fixed, let's vote on it, and, right, accept that we've done something incorrect and do better.
If, if I may, sorry, I didn't understand your question at first, this amount that, uh, they're transferring. Is the amount specifically for this year that she was overpaid, that her line is short, there is some money in her line, but not enough for a full payment.
I think there are.
Yeah.
This is just to ensure that she gets regular paychecks the rest of the year, correct?
Yes, for her last pay.
Her last pay.
And it has thus been corrected, yes, okay.
So how is the bi-weekly pay figured, is that like, that's something that's on the PI form, that they fill out? Okay.
It is, but there was a question on the payroll system, when you plug in a salary amount, is the, is the bi-weekly pay calculation not already automatically done? It's manual also.
And I think that's only breaks down to about fifty cents an hour, so probably, probably wouldn't notice a big deal on her paycheck, it's not like it would have been a.
I think she was, she was getting paid, like, fourteen fifty-two ninety-two, and she should have been getting paid fourteen, fourteen forty-six.
Yeah, it's not a dramatic amount, that is true, I, I remember those numbers now, okay, okay, thank you.
Alright, roll call please.
Ms. Plankin.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Gantz.
Yes.
Smokel.
Yes.
Ms. Swab.
Yes.
Swyad.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment real quick, only because we just did something for the commissioners. Last month, they asked for an appropriation, and I specifically asked if there was any money anywhere in their budget that they could move out. And I was told no.
I remember that.
There was money that they could have used.
That's right, cause they were wanting the money to pay out.
I just wanted to make that.
So this came from a, well, actually.
Part-time.
Again, she's not here to explain it.
Sure, that's why I just making a point, I wanted to do it after the vote.
And we denied that vote and said, go try.
There was another issue, since you brought it up, which was Steve Foster was paid for extra work done at the auditor's office. And his salary out of a part-time line from the auditor's office, so he actually had, there was extra money in some line. Related to him, that they were supposed to be pulling this from, and I guess it's from part-time, but I'm not. I'm not clear on that now, so, I don't know, we gotta look into that, but. That's. There was extra money initially, based on what Pam was telling us on Thursday, from that mistake that happened with him. But that's not where I thought it would come from, so I, I don't know the answer to that.
There's been discussion, um, rather limited in regards to whether or not we're going to make this employee, uh, pay back. What they have been overpaid, I'd like to have that discussion now, please. Basically, I already had it by voting to approve that transfer. But I felt the second part of that was that we were going to also ask that that money be paid back. And that she was overpaid.
You think she should have to pay it back?
Okay, other people pay back. Like someone got a double pay and they, they paid it back, take money out of each check next year.
Say that again?
It, it was my understanding that they're gonna take money out of her check next year.
They did come to our office yesterday and request that, if they, this is approved, they'd be willing.
That they will, yeah, she's gonna pay it back.
Next year, and pay it all back.
I don't know how that's set up, I don't.
Yeah, you, you guys will take care of that.
Yes. Just so you, I'm not sure if we were clear, the, the reason I went in twenty-three is cause there was extra money at pay line, cause they transitioned from one employee to another. So there's money there, and when we do the reconciliability of the year, there was money there, so that's the reason it was in red, to be addressed.
Cause she started like mid-month or later in the month or something, yeah.
And since we're talking such a small amount of money, it was never caught.
Right.
Now we're doing the reconciliability of this year, that's when, that's when we're in the red, and we raised the flag and said we gotta do something, okay?
Good with that? Thank you.
Thank you.
What's with that, Jim?
Um, I'm good with the explanation, I'm not good with the payback.
I agree with Jim, as in, I, I don't think, I think that if, if, um, a mistake was made. Uh, we talked about paying some overtime, uh, through no fault of the employee. Uh, because rules have been changed a little bit, and now we're talking about, um. A situation where an o- where an employee, uh, was, again, overpaid, it's not their fault. Not their responsibility necessarily, uh, but in my opinion, uh, this is something that should have been addressed, again, as overtime was. And, uh, now we get to the end of the year and find out that, uh, they have been overpaid, I just don't feel. Comfortable paying, uh, asking that individual to pay that back, it's not their fault.
I second that, as my, my, um, that was my issue as well, I get it, and, and. It's an unfortunate situation, but as employees, it's not your responsibility to make sure that the line items are right, and, and if there's an error found. That's on us to, to say, well, we messed that up, um, and fix it and move forward, I don't think that this person should be. And fix it and move forward. I don't think that this person should be punished for next year.
That, that, that's not, I mean, I, I don't disagree that that in fairness seems right, but in business, that's not right. Yes, this gentleman, the CFO, if he was gonna come up and not request that money back, I'm guaranteed they'll be getting it back. So I, I don't disagree, but.
Sorry, uh, Chad Smith to disagree, but now if we made a mistake, I would not go and ask for it back.
Thank you, sir.
Somebody wanna go to work for Midwest? State Board of Council have anything to say about this?
We've not required. We, we can, if you like. My guess is what they would.
Do.
I could do that.
Yeah, I think if this was a significant number, of course, or no one's getting a five, ten thousand dollar pass. This is, this is less than a thousand dollars. It breaks down to, uh, like fifty cents an hour.
So what we could do at this point, change it to what it should be. And then we'll see what the State Board of Council says. We'll come back in January and let the council know. Then you can decide what you wanna do from there.
Thank you.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Okay.
Is there an opportunity just to like double-check people's math? Like when the, with the PI forms or whatever, to just make sure that the, the math is mapping?
Well, I think it's part of the reason the HR department requested all the new PIs be filled out again since we passed that new. Uh, job classification, because they're trying to go back and double-check. Because of these type of things that popped up. I mean, I think there's other reasons, but I think it's just one of a few. And we're trying to put some things in, in process or in the process to double-check these also.
Good. Alright, moving on. Out of County General. Twelve to, twelve twelve, Galcasa grant. Two eleven office supplies, negative thirty dollars. Five forty-five books and other media, positive thirty dollars, total transfer zero.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Why don't you explain this, since we didn't get to see you at finance? Yeah, um, Ashley Solotacasa Director, um, the rates for, uh, the Star Press, which we get. Um, it's one of our investigative tools. We use it to follow some of our families that end up in the paper. Um, the rates went up from fourteen ninety-nine to sixteen ninety-nine, so it just brought me short for the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes. Alright, thank you. Moving on to Lit. Eleven seventy, one forty-five, Lit Jail. One twenty-six overtime, negative seventy-seven dollars. One thirteen, one-on-one Correctional Officer, positive seventy-seven dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the most to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Just looks like we're cleaning up some, uh, salary discrepancy. Alright. Any questions?
There's thirty dollars on the.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, it should say zero.
Could be zero.
Alright, roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Out of the Sheriff Lit. Eleven seventy, one twenty-nine, Lit Sheriff. One seventy-three Health Insurance, negative seven dollars, one seventy-five Disability Insurance. Positive seven dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the most to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Looks like it's just a re-allocation of where the insurance money goes. Yes. Alright, any questions? Roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Motion to approve financial transfers into men's salary ordinance with life reductions.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Dan. Roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Alright, at this time, we all have our. Backfilling report, which had no backfilling, so I'll entertain a motion for them.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Dan. Roll call on the motion to receive the backfilling report.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Alright. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Up first, we all have a copy of the Midwest Metal confirming an ERA resolution twenty twenty-four. Dash zero two one. I'll entertain a motion for this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Well, we had two on the first, so who, who, I'll give it to Bill.
Over there.
Bill. And then Ryan's second. Alright, do we have any discussion on this?
As I reported at the last meeting, the Tax Abatement Committee unanimously recommended approval of, of this designation. And also of the subsequent ordinance to, uh, allow the deduction.
Any questions on the ERA?
I just wanna make a quick comment. I'm in favor of both, but because my wife works for Midwest Metals, I'm going to be abstaining from both these votes.
That's a quick comment. I love, I love that we have this tool in place to get, uh, local manufacturing and local businesses to invest in the infrastructure. And we can provide, um, abatements for those investments. What I absolutely hate and despise is that we have to continuously, um, declare an ERA. Uh, which the language is, does not accurately describe what the area is, but we have to, by law, declare it an ERA. To be able to provide those abatements. So I'm in favor of the abatements. I absolutely hate the fact that we have to declare it an ERA, but. No, that's the state process.
You have any other comments, questions, concerns?
Uh, real quick, remind me, was there any, any additional workers needed for this new things?
Uh, Chad Smith, n- not currently. Ideally, yes, we will add it. We wanna run it. We wanna run it multiple shifts, but as part of this package, I did not declare any new hires for it.
Thanks.
Alright, roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt. Abstain. It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes.
What was the ordinance number on this?
I thought it was twenty-one.
Resolution, oh, excuse me, resolution number, thank you.
Alright, moving on for the Midwest, Midwest Metal Abatement Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two two. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for. Resolution.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Dan. Do we have any comments, questions, concerns on this one? Alright, hearing done. Roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt. Abstain. It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Great, moving on to appointments and committee reports. We have our twenty twenty-five board appointments election. Uh, you all have a copy of it. It's on your long piece of paper. So what I think we'll do is just go down board by board and, uh. Go from there. So we'll start with the alcohol beverage board. We have a choose one. Doug Hutchinson has been our representative on this board for a few years now, and he is seeking, he'd very much like to stay on the A B B board. Um, do I have a motion to support Doug to stay on this board?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Matt. Roll call.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
It's Dance. Yes. It's Piper.
Yes. Alright, moving on to Board of Health. We had one Democrat appointment and one Democrat, not, uh. Representative that was provided to us actually from Jamie and it's Phyllis, Phyllis Burks. Elise.
Elise.
Elise Burks. Uh, do I have a motion to appoint Elise to the Board of Health?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Dan. Roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Alright, Council Attorney. We have Beasley, Beasley Gilkinson to retain them as our counsel. Do I have anyone who'd like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Eugene. Roll call.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
It's Wyatt.
Yes.
It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Moving on to the Daleville Economic Development Commission. We have a choose one. This board has never met, and Brent Cheatham has been our representative for this for a while, and he's never had the opportunity to serve, so. Uh, would we like to have a motion to retain Brent?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Eugene. Roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
It's Wyatt.
Yes.
It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. MA Advisory Board. That's my pick, and I choose Matt to stay on there. I don't know if we have to do a roll call vote on that, because it's just my pick, but. Congratulations, Matt. You get to stay there. Alright, moving on to the Housing Authority. We have one Republican and one resident to choose. Uh, the Republican that we had on the list has chosen to serve on a separate board, so we do not have a Republican. You can scratch their name out. Uh, we do have our resident who actually lives in the Delaware County Housing Authority. Uh, Patricia Rort, she currently serves on the Housing Authority, would like to stay in that position. Um, we did have a Democrat who put their name in the hat, but this is a politically balanced board, so Matt and I were discussing this. And we were thinking that maybe we hold off on this vote till January second to give us an opportunity to try to locate another Republican individual. To serve. This is a working board. Um, so not only are these meetings during the day, they have a lot of special meetings that occur during business hours. They're required to be trained to be, uh, a trained commissioner, I believe, on the Housing Authority, and they do, um. Attend conferences that are out of state, so it needs to be someone who has a lot of flexibility in their employment. Or someone maybe who's retired, keep that in mind, so.
Can we vote for the resident?
Yes, that's exactly where it's headed. So, um, I guess, are we, are we, can we do a consensus, or do I need a vote to make this? Uh, Republican appointment a January second position? Are we just good with that?
The, I mean, typically speaking, the, the vacancy, well, the current serving member typically would continue to serve if they want to. Until the vacancy is filled or they're replaced.
Okay.
Um, they certainly are under no obligation, but you can fill one seat now if you wish and fill the other one in.
Alright, so let's do the resident. Uh, entertain a motion to retain Patricia as our resident member of the Housing Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Eugene. Roll call please on the resident.
Uh, Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Dance.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Alright, moving on to the Property Tax Assessment Board, the PTOA. We have to choose one Democrat. This is a politically balanced board, uh, and talking to James Carmichael, um, this board reports with him. He'd like to see people who have real estate experience, just because they're going over the property tax assessments if someone has a challenge. Uh, we did have a Republican put their name in the hat, but since it's a politically balanced board, and we get the Democrat. Carrie Wiggerly is the Democrat who, um, applied for this position. Do I have a motion to approve Carrie?
Excuse me, is he not presently serving?
He is.
I think he is.
Yes.
He should have an asterisk.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. He is currently serving on that board as our council representative.
Thank you. I move that he be approved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Bill, second by Eugene. Roll call please.
It's Flanagan.
Yes.
It's Hughes.
Yes.
It's Smoakel.
Yes.
It's Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
It's Dance.
Yes.
It's Piper.
Yes. Alright, great. Moving on to the Redevelopment Commission, we get to choose two. This is not a politically balanced board. Uh, we had four candidates come before us. We have Jason Brooks, who's a Republican. We have Amber Green, who is currently serving as our representative on that board. Rob Ke, uh, Republican. We have Rob Kiesling, who's also Republican and is currently serving on that board as our representative. And we have Carrie Wiggerly, who put his name in as a Democrat. So on this particular vote, we get to choose two. So I guess on this one, we'll do a roll call and just list your two.
Uh, real quick before we do that.
Yeah.
Are we giving people opportunity to speak who are here?
If they're here, if they'd like to.
Cause I, I believe Amber's here.
Amber, would you like to speak? Okay. Okay, sure.
You all know me, Amber Green. Um, first, I'd like to thank you for the appointment for this year. We did conclude our last meeting for the year almost two weeks ago, it will be two weeks ago Thursday. Um, I would like to continue to serve on this board. It's been, uh, an interesting experience, to say the least. I have come to every meeting prepared, um, in my personal opinion, we don't really get the packet with much advance notice, but I do make sure to print out every packet. I read every single thing upwards of one hundred and fifty to two hundred pages, depending on the meeting. And there are a couple of projects that we did get to see completed this year, but there are a couple of projects that are going into twenty twenty-five that I would like to see completed too. So I would appreciate your vote to reappoint me. Thank you.
Um, I got a few bullet points, Rob Kiesling can't be here, he's in, uh, for, uh, in Michigan.
For work.
For work. Um, Rob works for Indiana Michigan Power. Um, he's, uh, served two years on the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission already. Uh, he's also served a couple of years, uh, on the Tax Abatement Committee, um, not, not, not ours, I don't think. Four years on the Yorktown Redevelopment, uh, Committee. He's got other economic development boards that he's part of, including DAC and the Jay County Development Corp. Uh, he's a MBA graduate of Oklahoma University's Economic Development Institute, um, so Rob has, uh, been serving us well.
I'd like, I'd like to make a quick comment if I could.
Uh, yeah.
So. For me personally, uh, when we make our appointments, one of the main things that, that I generally don't like to, I don't like reappointing people to the same boards. I like people to, uh, move on to different areas. And it, it's a little bit frustrating that we've got, um, such a lack of interest in these board committee seats this year. I, I would, I think some of that is probably limited to the fact that we didn't really share these on, on, uh, social media like we have in the past. So hopefully in the future, we can make sure we do that, we can get better participation amongst people, so we actually have people to choose from in a lot of the seats. But I wanted to say, if any of you have watched any of those Redevelopment Commission meetings, a lot of money passes through there. That's not just a, um, basic board, there's a lot of projects that go on through there, um, in my opinion. We have to be a somewhat of a checks and balances to the commissioners. This is, uh, the commissioners and their economic development team pretty much run this board. And for me, when I make my appointment, my vote is to people who are gonna ask questions and kind of slow things down a little bit and let's get some answers. And if you've watched any of the meetings in the past year, the monthly Redevelopment Commission, our two current appointments that this council appointed last year, which is Amber Green and Rob Kiesling, are the, pretty much the only two who's asking questions on a consistent basis. Now, obviously, other members do ask questions, but those two ask questions consistently. And like my old boss used to say when I would ask him, why you ask so many questions? Cause that's where the answers are, right? We've got to have people there who are asking questions, so I give my full endorsement for our current, um, two board members, and that's where I'm gonna vote.
Uh, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I will share, since, uh, Rob, um, had bullet points for Matt. Both Carrie and Jason have served on this board previously. Uh, Jason is a loco, local business owner with J Crew and Brook Lawn, um, and actively, um.
And he's on the Yorktown School Board.
Yep, and is a, a big cheerleader for the community, does a lot for the, uh, Yorktown community and through Delaware County. Carrie Wiggerly, um, has office, obviously, I didn't say obviously, I did say they all served, but he previously served on this board as well, um, and he's a Realtor in the community. So those are those two individuals. I think most of us know all four of these folks who are applying, um.
So I do have one, a quick statement too. Um, I agree wholeheartedly with Ryan relative to this board. Uh, it is the commissioners', um, economic development arm. They do approve a ton of money, um, with, with very little, um, oversight other than this committee. So I do think it's, it's vitally important that, um, that our representatives be, uh, a voice that, um, that helps with that process and ask questions. I've witnessed, I went to a handful of meetings this year. Um, I do agree that, that Amber particularly has done a really excellent job of being prepared and, and asking hard questions when, when appropriate. Um, Rob, Rob to some degree the same, he's done a, a good job, uh, relative to that. Uh, Eugene brought in these conflict of interest packets. It did remind me, um, J Crew is actually a preferred, I think, a vendor of, of the DRCRC. So there is, you know, you know, a little bit of, of potential conflict with that, not that it matters, but, you know.
Mowing contrast.
It, it should be, uh, it should be identified, so.
I have another question, a potential conflict of interest, and this is just a point of information. Being an elected school board member and serving on this board, is there any conflict with that?
It wouldn't be a conflict of interest, the only potential problem would be if, if it were considered holding two, um, lucrative offices. But it's my understanding that the, um, the county redevelopment commissioners are not paid, so it would not be an issue to serve on both, a school board and a, as a commissioner. I'll confirm that, we, when I served on the Redevelopment Commission, you didn't get paid, so it was not considered.
Most of these boards, uh, almost everything does not get paid for the extra work that you go into for these. But I think Ryan, I, it's encouraging for me to hear you state that you see value of people staying on a board longer than one year.
Well, that is fair, and then I do think.
Loss of knowledge.
I'm evolving. I, I meant to make that point too, that's, at least in Amber's case, and even Rob's to some degree, uh, and having served here only a year initially, it's a whirlwind the first year. And, you know, it's really when you start to hit the ground running in year two that I, I think that there's gonna be some value there too, so.
Yeah. There you go, Ryan, I appreciate you evolving. All right, so we'll go, um, we'll do roll call and just choose your two.
Mr. Flanagan.
Uh, Rob Kiesling. Let's just stay with the current one, since we'll give Amber another year to screw it up or fix it.
Very encouraging.
She does a good job. Green and Kiesling.
Mr. Mokel.
Amber Green, Rob Kiesling.
Mr. Webb.
Amber Green and Rob Kiesling.
Mr. Wyatt.
Harry Wiggerly and Jason Brooks.
Mr. Vance.
Uh, Green and Kiesling.
Piper.
Rob and Amber. All right, congratulations, Amber, you stick on. All right, moving on, yeah, and for Rob too. Uh, Tax Abatement Committee, we were, uh, informed by Bill last meeting, maybe two meetings ago, that the Tax Abatement Committee that we have in place would like to stay as our Tax Abatement Committee, so, uh, there was no other interest. I'll do a roll call to keep our current slate.
I might just comment briefly, uh, Joe and Josh have both been, uh, excellent members of the committee. Uh, they represent the right kind of interest. Joe is, uh, associated with a large local manufacturer, Josh is a local businessman. Uh, they were instrumental in helping us put together the guidelines that we adopted, uh, this summer, uh, for tax abatements going forward. And, uh, I, I'm glad that they are both willing to serve.
Thank you for your work, Bill too, as well.
Thank you for your work and willing to serve again.
All right, roll call on our slate, I mean, excuse me, I'll make a, take a motion for our current slate.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Dan, roll call.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vance.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, moving on, last one, Yorktown Economic Development, uh, choose one. Our very own Dan Flanagan has so graciously volunteered to continue to serve on the board that has never met. Um, so Ryan, that's another thing too, we have quite a few boards that only meet as needed or never meet, so there's not a lot of interest in.
I learned that one last year. Only as needed.
Uh, roll call to retain Dan as our appointment to the Yorktown Economic Development. I mean, move, move.
Second.
Bill, second by Eugene. Roll call to retain Dan.
Mr. Flanagan.
I will abstain.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Nope, just kidding. Absolutely.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Vance.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, uh, I do wanna take a, a moment to thank anyone who did put their name out there for consideration for these boards. Um, some of them are rather time consuming, some of them never meet, but still just putting your name out there and wanting to be a part of the, the process in the community is really important. So I, I thank you, uh, for taking the time to, to apply.
So just to reiterate, we do have one remaining Republican seat on the Housing Authority. Anybody who's willing to, or, uh, engage in that capacity, uh, on a working board such as that, um, we're definitely looking for candidates.
And I'd also state too, uh, their board president Forrest is here in our meeting today. So, uh, Forrest, you wanna go up real quick and just tell us a little bit about what your board does, just so folks know while we have you here?
Good morning, Noah, and thank you. Yes, and by the way, uh, Mr. Piper, I'm, uh, I'm the vice.
Vice President, okay, excuse me.
Uh, that was pointed out to me last year.
Okay.
But, no, thank you. We are endeavoring to, uh, do a lot of, uh, what I quote remodeling of nineteen thirty-nine facilities. So, uh, I can tell you truthfully, that's quite a long time ago. That was the year I was born, so I guarantee you it needs help. So, uh, uh, and we are, we, we're looking for persons that are, care about the community and, and the, uh, housing, uh, needs for our citizens. Uh, and that's why, uh, we're working on certain individuals to join our board that had expertise that we could use. And, uh, the, the board that we have, you, you've approved in the past, uh, we are diversity, diversified in our, uh.
All things.
In our, in our lives and in our, uh, occupations. So, uh, any diversity we can receive, we would appreciate. Uh, and the board is very dedicated, I'll tell you that, very dedicated to, uh, the betterment of our community.
Are there, hey Forrest, are there any gaps in your occupations that you're looking for, for this one opening?
Let's put it this way, I spoke to, uh, uh, CPA, I've spoken to, uh, a, a, a doctor. I've spoken to, uh, a bill, home builder, retired, um, finance, uh, home building, especially the home building industry, that's, that would be good. Uh, because if, we could use the advice, you know, when we get around to, we have, we have hired an attorney, we have hired consultants. We're now in the process of, of doing a lot of other things that are need to be done primarily before we enter into any major contracts or anything of that nature. But, uh.
Great.
We just need dedicated people such as, uh, you have been, and, uh, well, anyway.
All right, we'll keep working for you, Forrest.
Take all the help we can get.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving.
All right, old business, uh, Eugene, you wanna explain why we have our due pay ordinances back in here? I know you've had some extra conversations with the Auditor's Office.
Sure, I asked after the last meeting to have a auditor review what we passed, just to make sure everything would be ready for the next year. And it brought to my attention a couple of minor things that needed to be added in here. And we need to specifically say the name of the fund that's gonna be created, and then we need to leave a space in here for the fund number to be created. And I'm requesting that we would amend each ordinance to add those in there.
Now motion.
Well, so what the process would be is we'd have a motion to amend, we'd make those amendments, we'd approve it, but then we would need to suspend the rules to do a second reading and adopt it today, for it to be in place for our first payroll of twenty-five, correct?
So we haven't adopted this yet?
We did, but this is to amend what we adopted.
So it's just a slight amendment?
Yes, but we just have to go to.
Or a motion to approve the amendments?
Are we doing this for, this is for twenty twenty-four dash?
Twenty-six, I think, isn't it?
Twenty-six? Okay, so.
Can we do it concurrently, cause is it the problem with, same problem with both of them?
Yes.
Can we do it concurrently, or do we need to do them separately, Ben?
I would really prefer that you do them separately, just so the record's clear.
So moved, uh, uh, approve the amendments to twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six?
Second.
All right, motion by Dan, second by Eugene, I don't think we have any questions on, on that, right?
Where are they going? Where's, where they?
They have to go, cause it says, where we create the line, um.
Let's see, there was a.
We can give you a copy of another ordinance that has them, give it to Ben.
Right, I think Matt's question is exactly where's it gonna go into the ordinance, Ed?
Yeah. Thank you, C.
C.
Yes, C.
Yep, it is.
Okay.
Actually see that we're going, that we give the auditor, um, the ability to, or do we have to actually put the name of the fund in there, is that what you said? So what is the name?
There's the two names right there. Go read this, Eugene, you have your, I don't have it. Let it end. Uh, longevity experience pay public safety. And then the other issue is you wanted there to be a space to add in.
The line, and then they'll put the number in, once they create it.
In this same paragraph?
Sure.
Yes.
Cause we typically deal with those, we'll scan them in and public post this stuff on the website, so now it's clear what the fund name and the fund number. Publicly now.
Was there, Eugene, didn't you say something about another wording issue of some sort, uh, when we talked?
I'm still reviewing, cause I think there's more than, more than just that one.
Okay.
So, but these two need to be done, and that's why I'm requesting them now, and hopefully within we can do it all in one meeting on these two things.
Okay.
The others, I'd like to introduce at a meeting and then do it properly over two meetings, let people have time to really review it.
Okay.
Okay.
So what I've done is I've inserted into that, um, paragraph for section C now reads, Delaware County Auditor's Office shall establish a new longevity experience pay line entitled, in quotes, longevity experience pay, public safety, end quote, within the appropriate budgets for the purposes of handling these payments as fund number, and then a colon with a blank line for you to fill in the phone number. Thank you, Ben.
All right. Roll call on that amendment.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Vance.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Dan, second by Matt, roll call on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Vance.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Motion to accept the, uh, uh, change of ordinance, twenty twenty-four, twenty-six, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Eugene, roll call please.
Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Vance.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, moving on to the same type of update for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two seven. This would be on section L, it looks like. So we'll go through the same process, do I have a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Dan.
Can we have Ben?
Then read the update, yep.
Is it just the prosecutor, or do we also need to include one for the magistrate, or the master commissioner?
Or title, I think prosecutor is fine.
I think I'll apply to both of them, but.
All right, so this now reads. The Delaware County Auditor's Off, uh, se- section L now reads, the Delaware County Auditor's Office shall establish a new longevity experience pay line entitled, longevity experience pay prosecutor, within the appropriate budgets for the purpose of handling these payments as fund number, and then a spot for the number to be filled in.
Shouldn't be prosecutor and master commissioner?
That's what he was asking.
That's what he was asking.
Hey, we do have the numbers for those, if you want me to provide them. Oh, you do? I do have the numbers for them.
Okay, so you want me to have it entitled longevity experience pay prosecutor and master, and slash commissioner?
I don't know what the limitation on the characters in that field, but.
Oh.
Or system, it's, it's part of the issue.
Prosecutor just prosecutor, us, yes.
What's that?
Cross dot.
Could it be deputy prosecutor or prosecutor, or just prosecutor?
It's all for that office, I mean, we're just trying to separate them, cause they're, they're different.
Yeah, well, I'm just.
That's the only reason we put the names on there.
Subject to what you can put in, I've put longevity experience paid prosecutor slash commissioner.
Okay.
Try to make it short.
Would the private master commissioner's line be under the court? You're gonna have to make two separate lines.
We just have the one eighty-four for the commissioner and the prosecutor together.
They're both being one line?
Hanya Dunn's Moore, Chief Deputy Auditor, with the, um, new chart of accounts, uh, guidelines. Basically, if it's a, it's a certain department, so if you're talking prosecutor's department, you go by their one thousand, which is county general. Their department number, one three seven, is that right? Um, and then the ending would be the number that Elizabeth give you. Um, as far as the master commissioner being under the courts, what, what devises that, I guess you'd say, is they are one thousand, one three eight. But the ending number's still gonna be the number that Elizabeth read off. Does that make sense?
You'd say that are two different funds, so.
Right, right. But as far as chart of accounts, last three numbers, it's gonna be the number that Elizabeth gave you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Same for, same for lit and, and or family support, as far as the master commissioner or a prosecutor, it's, it goes by the fund, the department, and then that last three digits shows you or tells you that it's related to the experience pay.
Elizabeth, did you have the fund number available already?
Yes, uh, for the master, master commissioner and the prosecutor, that number's one eighty-four.
Oh, the whole line. I was gonna say, why don't you give me the whole line?
She just said it would be two separate lines and the lit, so.
So how do you identify it, just fund one eighty-four?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other one is one eighty-three.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and add those in now.
Long time no see. Um, what we could do is, since we are talking, what, five different funds with the family support, the prosecutor, the, the lit, court, uh, we could, Ben, if you'd like us to just provide you a, a list of each and every one full line. We could do that in order to have the full, because I do believe Ed would prefer the full line being listed in the actual ordinance. Because, you know, twenty-five years down the road, when someone pulls an ordinance, it's hard to understand if you don't have every detail there or resolution. So Ben, we can do that after the meeting, they can get you those exact numbers.
All right, so when you get that sentence ready, if you'd like to read that out to us.
Uh, the Delaware County Auditor's Office shall establish a new longevity experience pay line entitled longevity experience pay prosecutor slash commissioner, within the appropriate budgets for the purpose of handling these payments as fund number to be inserted.
All right, roll call on the amended ordinance.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Vance.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, motion to suspend.
So moved.
Motion by Dan, second, was that you, Bill?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Vance.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Matt, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vance.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right. Thank you for your due diligence on that, Eugene, because, uh, I think we all felt we were pretty good after that last meeting, so thank you for that. I don't have any new business. Do we have any elected officials and department heads?
I'm not speaking to anyone. Um, Brad Holt, I just want to give you a, a quick update, won't take long, on the interest to date. For the end of eleven, as of eleven thirty, uh, total amount of interest earned this year is three million, four hundred seventy three thousand, eight hundred forty three dollars. Of that, five hundred and forty four thousand, three hundred and four is ARP money.
Oh, is that number one more times?
Oh, sorry. For which one?
ARP.
Both, okay.
ARP, yeah.
Um, three million, four hundred seventy three thousand, eight forty three overall. Uh, ARP is five forty four, three oh four. So if you take that out, it's still at two point, uh, two million, nine hundred and twenty nine thousand, five thirty nine. Um, kind of predicting, looking at what's happened over the last few months, um, probably adding another two sixty to the, to the just without the ARP and without the ARP money. Um, so about two sixty more, so looking at about three point one eight seven. Um, interest on that. Quick question.
Yesterday, oh, or.
No, go ahead.
Uh, yesterday, Matt and I attended the commissioners' meeting because we needed to get their support for that twelve hundred dollar contract for the company to come in to see if they can assess and do that large data dump with our salary study numbers and such. Um, and, and at the meeting, the commissioners actually had a, an ordinance, right, uh, to, uh, allocate that money from the interest from the ARP, which two years ago, they had agreed to allow us to keep that, so we didn't have to do any layoffs to stay within our numbers. Uh, we all knew that they were going to come eventually ask for that money. Matt spoke yesterday, not in favor of them taking that money. I'll let you speak to that here in a second. But, um, there were some questions when we left that meeting, how much money are we actually talking about now with that interest? So thank you for giving us an actual number on that, uh, today, so.
And I, I think one of, what I turned in as revenue, um, or projected anyway, I think was around two million. So we're gonna be about three point one, so for this year, anyway, we're good. Now, hopefully rates stay where they're at. Um, I've got some, uh, things that are locked in and, um, so that, that they're like a five point three eight, so which is real good right now, so. All right. Any other questions?
Well, you can say, well, you know, I don't have a question.
Okay.
Point.
I think Ryan may have a question for you, though, after Matt.
Yeah, so.
I'll speak, it's okay. I, I, it's just answer, I got more of a comment. You're good, Brad. I'll, I'll speak after. Thank you.
I did make a comment about it, um, obviously, because I was the one at the council meeting budget hearings that indicated that if they wanted to try to take the interest money back for that, then, then they would have to come get it, which they are working towards doing. My issue with that, obviously, is that the interest money, just like other revenues that, um, are part of the county general fund, were taken into account during our, our budget meeting and how we budgeted for, for next year. Brad's indicated we're doing a little bit better on interest, but that may offset the fact that we may be doing less on actual tax revenue for next year, which, um, some have said could be the case. So my point was simply that taking that money away, we worked hard, obviously, to try to get salary increases for, for county employees this year. And that was goal number one. Um, I think there's still more work to be done on some of that. And just to be blunt, the commissioners really haven't indicated what they need that ARP money for. There's still tens of millions of dollars not allocated in ARP dollars currently that are, they're still working through. So I'm not exactly sure how they know they need another five hundred and forty four thousand.
Well, and the guidelines changed, so they actually have to update what plan they were hoping to pass because, uh, guidelines have changed on how they can use it.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it was tabled, basically, and then they'll readjust it based on what they're allowed to use the interest money for. So again, um, my point still stands that, you know, they're, they're not even sure what they need it for, so, um, that was my, my comment yesterday.
Ryan?
I just, I just wanted to expand a little bit on what Matt said. I think, um, I think it's incredibly overstep of, of the boundaries of the commissioners to kind of abuse their authority to pass an ordinance to, to take that ARP interest money away from the county general. That money benefits everyone. It benefits all the county employees. It benefits, uh, the ta, county taxpayers, all the residents. And, you know, I feel like we've kind of been a little bit too passive in, in the language we've used. You know, as they're allowing us to keep this money and they've allowed us to keep it for two years, but now they're, they're asking for it back. No, make no mistake about it, that's our money. They've overstepped their authority and took it from us, in my opinion, and this is always just my opinion. But, uh, I just wanted to state, I think that was an incredibly poor decision. Um, and, you know, hopefully that's not something that continues to happen in the future. I know there's some change coming over there, and, uh, I hope the county money stays within the fiscal body to manage that county money, uh, in, in the future. As far as the ARP money goes, when we, um, approved that plan, there was, uh, all kinds of restrictions and guidelines for how it could be spent. Some of that stuff's even been outdated, like they wanted to do a lot of internet fiber, fiber optic cables for internets or, uh, rural internet, um, expansion, so people could have internet out there. Well, now we have Starlink everywhere, so that's pretty much obsolete. You don't need to lay the cables anymore. But basically, they opened up, uh, the parameters for what that money could be spent on. Pretty much been on almost anything now. I, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of exaggerating a little bit there, but what I'm trying to portray is that there's a lot more wider range of things we can use that money for. I think the plan needs a complete overhaul and reevaluation of the plan to help best spend that money. And I've been saying for years, I've, I'm, I would love, we spent a lot of money on utilities, a ton of money for that building out there. And I would love to see someone put some solar panels out there on the roof of that building and cut back on some of these, um, utility costs that we have for those buildings out there. So, uh, put that money to use. We don't need any more sewer lines. We don't need any more, uh, internet cables. So that's all I gotta say, and hopefully next year, they don't pass an ordinance and take our money from us.
I have a question. So we approved the plan for the spending of the principal of the ARP. That's, that's been done. It needs to be changed, I'm sure. But we haven't appropriated that interest money. They can't spend it without our appropriating, is that correct?
Yesterday's comment was that John Brook indicated that a new fund, they couldn't go into an existing line, and a new fund had to be created for that interest money. Was that correct?
That was the recommendation that we received.
So, but it can be, can be paid out unless we appropriate it.
I would say so.
But the loophole with that bill is no matter, they can tell us anything. The second we appropriate it, they can change it after the fact and make it whatever they want. So it doesn't matter what we appropriate. As soon as they get it in their hands, they can do whatever they want with it. So the only way to stop that would be to not appropriate it, period.
Right, the documentation said the commissioners foul.
That's my point.
Yeah.
That would take some courage from people sitting up here.
All right, uh, get coroner.
Gavin Green, Delaware County Coroner. I just want to give you the year end recap for two thousand twenty four. I cannot make this up. As of this morning, we had six hundred and sixty six coroner calls. Um, out of that, we had two hundred and one autopsies. We're averaging about fifty five and a half calls per month. And that jumped up from the last time I went with you guys. We just had three last night. There was two deaths at the hospital and I had to go to scene at two thirty this morning. So, um, you can never really budget and or predict, uh, when you have projections. It's just, that's what it is, so. Uh, and I do believe, not gonna be as good as Fred, but I think we're gonna give about ten thousand dollars back instead of a hundred thousand, so.
We'll take it.
Yep.
I like cash back.
Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any other department heads? We got Jamie.
Mr. Bane. Council Jamie Bane, Health Department Administrator. Um, Mr. Webb, am I correct, this is your final council meeting? Yes, sir. Um, my opportunity to speak during department head, so I wanted to throw something out. I hope I'm not stealing anybody's thunder. Uh, I wanted to thank you. Um, anybody that knows, Ryan and I have not always seen eye to eye. To the point that there was probably a time where if we had met in a dark alley, only one of us would have came out, it would have been me. Ryan, you've won my respect over your course of serving as a council member. I say that at the risk of stepping in, you know, some, some of the opinions you've shared, we've not always agreed. Uh, you've been very polarizing. But as a citizen of Delaware County, I've respected the fact that you've questioned, you've asked the questions that need asked for years. I attended these meetings and questions that I sat, hoping would be asked, did not get asked. And you've, you've, uh, held department heads accountable. You've held departments overall accountable. I know that's not popular, it hasn't been popular among a lot of departments in the county. But, uh, I would challenge those department heads to look at things through the eyes of a citizen and see that that's all necessary. You've challenged me many times to explain decisions we've made, spending that we have, uh, budgeting, uh, much more than what goes on in these meetings that people realize, and, uh, that's held me accountable. I appreciate that. Just wanted to offer that.
Thank you, Jamie.
All right, Ed?
Well, Jamie just stole my thunder. I'd, uh, agree with Jamie on most of what he said there, so we appreciate all your time and effort. Love your input. We did take it constructively and take it back and look at things, so, um, it didn't go unnoticed. Didn't always agree on things. Quite often we didn't, but that's all right. I did want to say, last meeting, I wasn't able to attend. I apologize for that, because I normally try to attend all these meetings. I think it's my role and responsibility. I couldn't attend because of my wife's, uh, medical condition. I had, had to attend that doctor's, uh, meeting. And Hanya stepped in. I want to thank her for standing up here for five hours plus and take whatever's thrown there, so I thank you for doing that. That's your job. I think we work well together. We, we do all have to support each other. And yesterday after, uh, yesterday morning, there was a commissar meeting and the council leadership did come in. This is a contract that, uh, I appreciate them showing up and requesting the commissioners sign an agreement. All we're trying to do is import the data for that this council approved concerning the job classifications. Because there's almost five thousand fields of data to enter. And I know a lot of you departments have received their request for the PI forms to be updated, and you can imagine how much time that takes for your department. We have to redo all that stuff mainly for our office, for, into our accounting. So imagine how much time that takes, and that's what's, it's being hit with us with the job classification requirement. So that's the reason we're trying to figure out a way to import this data, because we've already got data and it's been, uh, looked at to make sure it's all correct in a spreadsheet. So it's in a database, but to re-enter it would just be very time consuming and the chance of it would just dramatically go up. So trying to figure out a way to import that data so we don't have to go through that process. So with that, I appreciate the council this year and appreciate, uh, us being your secretary for all these meetings. And starting next year, if there's anything I want to do for you, we look forward to it.
Thank you. Uh, Carrie, do you mind looking to see if anyone signed up for public comment? In the meantime, I see we do have public here. Are you wishing to speak, Chris? Come on, come on up.
I'm the only one on the thing.
Oh, are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thank you too, Ben.
Uh, okay, uh, my name's Christopher Bilbury, and, uh, number one, I just want to say, I'm sure that there are a lot of people that are, uh, excited that today is Mr. Webb's last council meeting. And I, I want to echo, um, the health department's, uh, words, uh, Mr. Jamie Bane's words about Ryan. I've not always agreed with things that Ryan has said or done, but, um, I, I have to hand it to him that he has asked questions that need to be asked so often. And I don't understand why or when this started, but in governments, not just here, but, but all over the state and elsewhere, uh, we get into this thought that it's a popularity contest and we don't want people to be mad. And so many, uh, council members, and I've, I've heard it here from people in meetings and behind the scenes, they've said that they've not wanted to address things in the meetings. We'll do this in an email. We'll do this behind the scenes because it doesn't necessarily play out well, or we don't want to make someone look bad. And that's the exact antithesis of what you guys are supposed to be doing. Ninety-nine percent of what you need to be doing needs to be done in these meetings. The public needs to know. It doesn't matter if you know what's going on. Ryan, contrary to popular opinion, Ryan is not dumb. He's not an idiot. He doesn't ask these questions because he doesn't know what's going on. He asks the questions because that's his job. That's all of your jobs. And I'm really, really, really concerned that, starting in January, starting in the months that follow, that these meetings to, to probably a lot of people's happiness are, are going to be shortened because a lot of questions are not going to be asked. And I task you guys, all of you, to take from him and question the hard questions. It's not a popularity contest. It's not about being liked by these people here. It's about being responsible to the citizens that have hired you to do the hard job, to do the things that are not popular. And, uh, the last thing that I want to say is, uh, even in this meeting, there's been a couple of things that's been brought up about, uh, conflicts of interest. And, uh, when you were going through the, uh, boards appointments, a lot of times, what you don't, we, the public, look at what goes on here. And I, I want you to understand that the law is the floor, not the ceiling. So what is just good enough, what's just barely good enough to be okay, it might be all right, it might not be a conflict. That's just barely okay, and that's not okay with us. We expect more from you. We expect higher than the floor. So I know that you have a member that's going to be coming in in January. I am deeply concerned because of some contracts that that gentleman has with the council. I'm gonna wrap up in just one second.
Thank you.
Uh, I know that there are some contracts that the new council member has, and I, I really hope that you guys address this. And, and we might get people say, well, it's okay. I'm just letting you know from the public standpoint, it looks concerning. And I understand that there was a free and fair election, and I understand that this person won, and that's wonderful. But I'm not sure that everyone that went to vote knows that this person has these contracts. So I hope that you guys address this. I hope that you talk about it. I hope that that's openly communicated and you let us know what you're gonna do to make sure that there are no conflicts there with his actions and whatever goes forward. So thank you, Ryan. Thank you to all of you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, comments from council.
Well, Ryan, nobody had more interaction. Jane and I, and, uh, I'll miss you.
I've enjoyed serving with you.
Arguments and not arguments and agreements.
It's been a ride. Has been.
Been an overused phrase, but thank you for your service.
Thank you. I enjoyed, enjoyed serving with you as a council member and with you my first, I think your first two years as council attorney. Thank you so much. Well, if I could say real, real quick, you know, it's been four years. They went by pretty fast. And, um, when I got started with this, I, I was never in politics. I was just a guy who sat at home, had a family, read the newspaper. And I got tired of seeing the same twelve, fifteen names moving from one position to the next. And I told my wife I got a crazy idea. I'm gonna, I'm gonna run. And, um, she thought I was crazy and, uh, we ended up winning, and, uh, here we are. And I came in during COVID, so they didn't have any, um, school or, or class for incoming, uh, elected officials. They canceled that that year. So I come in and it was, you know, feet in the fire and, uh, learning as you go. And fortunately, there were some, some good veteran council members here. Um, I, I'd come in, they changed my mind. I, I thought that we needed a lot of new vision on the council. But I quickly learned it's important to have some, some people who have a little bit of history there. Ron Quake and Bush, been around for a long time. He would say things that, you know, remind us of the, of the things that we needed to be following. Mary Chambers didn't speak a lot, but when she did, you know, she had a lot of knowledge as well. Um, I, I sit next to, uh, uh, Ms. Jane Lassiter and, and, uh, I sit next to Ryan, and they, they kind of coached me along the way a, as we went through things. And I served with Scott and Jessica at the beginning as well, and, and I really enjoyed serving with all of the council members. And I've enjoyed serving with all these new council members. Jim is my neighbor, so I've known him before, Mr. Flanagan, and, and obviously Mr. Vance. Eugene's been wonderful, and I've appreciated serving with every one of you. Some, some of the comments have been made about asking questions. When I was running for office, I sit out. When I was running for office, I sit out there, um, much like, um, Mr. Brand sits out there now, he's been elected, he's coming in. Before I was elected, I'd come to these meetings, and I didn't know what the hell anybody was talking about, they were talking about things I didn't know what it was. And Ron Quake and Bush would always speak up, and I knew he knew the answer, but he would speak up and say things to remind people out there like me, getting to what we're talking about. And I made a mental note, and I said, if I'm ever fortunate enough to sit in that seat, I'm going to take that lesson, and I'm going to ask questions, and I'm going to repeat things, and I'm going to slow down things so the people watching at home and the people sitting out here understand what we understand, because it's easy for us to just go through these motions, because we understand it, and lose sight of the fact that not everybody does, and we need to slow it down a little bit. So, I learned that lesson from Ron, I was, and, uh, so that's, that's the majority of why I would always ask questions. Uh, not all the time I knew the answer already, but many of the times I already knew the answer, but it was mostly to get it on the record and to give you department heads an opportunity to justify on the record why you were either asking for what you're asking for or, um, spending what you were spending, so it wasn't always, uh, to be adversarial. A lot of times, it was an opportunity to give you to make your case, and I know many of you understand that. Uh, but when I came in, my goal was to do, was to serve a term. I had no interest in being a career politician, I don't, I think we should all take stock of that, everybody, it's great to serve a term, maybe two terms. But after that, um, I think it's good, important to, we got a lot of good people out there who could get involved, so hopefully, uh, if we keep a good, good turnover, people coming in and out, and I'm sure the people are in these chairs this year, maybe in different chairs in, in, in future years. And, and that's always not a bad thing, so I'm sure next year's council, uh, will be in good hands, and, and I look forward to seeing how, how things are done, but what I wanted to do was disrupt the business as usual politics in Delaware County. I feel like I've done that, I feel like I've disrupted the, the, um, rubber stamping, and my goal was to be the most uh, transparent and accessible elected official in the entire state of Indiana, and I think I've done that as well. I think anyone who, who, uh, you would speak to knows I've answered every email, I've answered every phone call, I speak to everyone in the grocery store when they approach me, um, and I, I challenge everyone to continue to push yourself to be the most accessible as you can be, and, um, one last thing I want to say, I've had the luxury of having the newspaper hold us accountable. Mr. Bilbury with his podcast, he holds us accountable, I know a lot of us don't always like what he has to say about us, but he holds us accountable. I've had some pretty good critics of myself that hold me accountable to, to things that I say and do. With the loss of our local newspaper, I know we still have it, but they don't cover what we do anymore, and it's a statistically proven fact that when the newspapers go away in small towns and cities, the local government corruption goes up. Okay, so I want everyone to continue holding each other accountable, you guys need to continue holding our elected officials accountable, and we as elected officials need to practice peer accountability and hold each other accountable. And don't be afraid to speak up if someone's in the wrong, just because we all belong to the same party, or, or maybe we don't belong to the same party. If you're wrong, you're wrong, if you're right, you're right, um. But I think that's important to do, and I, I, I want to say that it's been, uh, my greatest honor to sit up here and serve with each and every one of you, and to serve all of you out there, and I thank all of you.
Do you have anyone else from council?
Well, I also want to thank you, Ryan. Like, I think, I think it's probably been the sentiment of everyone, we have had moments where we disagree, which is normal, but I will say, Ryan's a lot of fun outside of council, he's a very, very funny, fun person to be around. We've had a lot of laughs, uh, a lot of laughs, um, and in those really long budget meetings, when we get slap happy, um, you can always count on Ryan to be one of the silly ones, so I appreciate those moments where you can lighten things up, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I, I'm Ryan's biggest critic, as it is. We talk frequently enough compared to probably most, and so he knows that I like to bust his chops about some of his, uh, statements, positioning, demeanor, attitude, you know, all those things, but uh, I will miss him also and, and appreciate his service to, to this county council and paving the way for, uh, for asking a lot of questions.
Thank you, Beth.
All right, so we have our, is that the last from the council? Okay, reorganization meeting is Thursday, January second at nine AM back in here, and then our next regular meeting is Tuesday, January twenty-eighth at nine AM. Um, and with that, I wish you all a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays, enjoy, if you have some time off, enjoy it. Do some of the local shopping, we've got a lot of great stores downtown, so come on down here. Um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Dan, roll call please.
Ms. Blanken.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Mokel.
Yes.
Swyad.
Yes.
Swyad.
Kance. Yes, sorry.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, we're adjourned until next year.
Merry Christmas, everyone.